If the tech folks are ready back there, Crystal, if you're ready to take the notes, I'll call this April 17th meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order. The first item would be the approval of the minutes. Are there questions or concerns or a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'm taking it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. We will be changing the agenda somewhat today to accommodate the travel of the applicant administrative item number four. That is application PDD 08-2B filed by Salina Partners LLC. Is there a staff report?
I think there is, but the operative staff members are still discussing bicycling.
You want to call them, please?
Alan, the blue beard.
That will teach us to do a steady session and it's active right before an active meeting. But we got a lot of good feedback about bicycling and bicycle routes, which we'll be sharing with you in the future.
All good. We've moved on and approved the minutes and we're ready for item number four and the staff report.
What we have here in terms of moving to item four is an administrative item. It does not involve a change in zoning or any of the stipulations involved with the replat of Lambert's addition, but just by way of background, the replat of Lambert's addition was a planned development district that was done in 2008. It was also the first TIF, which is a tax increment financing district, the first of its kind in the city of Salina. So it has a lot of stipulations to it above and beyond what you'd have even with a planned development district, and there's a lot of limitations there. And then in addition to that, because of the developers involved, and Kohl's is a national retail developer, there's reciprocal easement agreements between the different parties involved out here. And one of the reciprocal easement agreements was a shared parking arrangement that was done recently here that allows for the ability for shared parking and also to count spaces that are over on the Longhorns Steakhouse site as part of an overall campus parking plan. So the reason that we are here is that the plan that was reviewed and approved by the planning commission in 2008 had this plan for a Kohl's store, this parking which is built, and a footprint for a 14,800 square foot retail space attached to the south side of Kohl's. And then back in this area were 24 parking spaces, and parking was at a bit of a premium as we were looking at this development initially. There's a line right here that you can barely detect. That is the lease line and also an ownership line now, and so everything north of that line belongs to Kohl's. Everything south of that line is associated with this development. So what we have before you today is Salina Partners LLC is requesting approval of an amended site development plan for the rest of this Lot 1 Block 1 of the replat of Lambert's addition, and that is to allow the construction of a 22,000 square foot retail clothing store south of Kohl's as opposed to the 14,800 footprint originally approved. And so dimension wise, the original plan, the building was 160 feet wide, 92 feet deep, and there were 24 existing parking spaces in behind. This footprint here is 140 feet wide, but it's 160 feet deep, so it extends quite a bit farther back, this being a location where there is parking. So what it does is it brings this area here much closer back to this parking and maneuvering area. The building would be oriented to face east and would match up with the front facade of Kohl's, and right now there's 37 spaces available out in this area for the Ross Stores property, and there's a plan to expand that and add a South Row parking to compensate for the loss of these spaces right there. We've given you a kind of a table there where, again, when we take the campus approach, we look at the total number of parking spaces available. Since the report went out, we have done some re-tabulating of parking requirements, and so our initial calculation was at 22,000 square feet. There'd be 88 spaces needed, but this is kind of staff's plan for how parking would be addressed. There's 37 spaces existing east of the store. There's 22 spaces if the landscape island's retained that would be added south of the store site, so that gives us 59 spaces in close proximity to the store. There are 36 spaces across the street at Longhorn Steakhouse that are surplus over and above what is required, which makes for available this site 95 spaces, and based on the retail area, 72 spaces would be provided under that plan. And John, if you could go back to the site plan, what we're talking about in terms of parking is no spaces in this area here which would be preserved for loading and unloading maneuvering, and then difficult to detect right here, maybe it would show up better on another one, John. Right here, very faint, is an existing island. That is there today, and what we're suggesting is these remain the same from about here forward. These get built, which would be 22 instead of 26. These don't get built because that avoids complications with the driving maneuvering back here of trucks and deliveries, and it gives us 59 spaces in close proximity and 95 available total. It also eliminates our concern staff had about the rear loading area, and there were already some waivers and concessions granted by the planning commission in 2008 as regards to islands and green space in the front, and we think that if we're able to preserve that island, that will keep the green space at the front of the development in a consistent pattern. This property like Kohl's is in a mapped floodplain, so we believe that when Kohl's was done, this pad was already elevated, but it was elevated and done for a 14,800 square foot building pad, so there may need to be some modifications done in terms of filling, compaction, testing for the 22,000 square foot footprint, but you can build in floodplain as long as you elevate the floor. I think you had in your packet, and John, will you be able to display the Kohl's pylon signs that are available? The original plan for this development was rather than having a bunch of individual pole signs, that there would be two large pylon signs, one on Ninth Street, one on I-135, and I'm going to assume that Ross Stores would be major tenant number two, so rather than having their own independent sign, they would share space with Kohl's on this particular sign and then have a wall sign available. I am without a script, John, so do you have the floor plan and the elevations available?
This is the floor plan first.
The floor plan, which I believe to the right is the orientation, would be the front of the building, so this would all be store area and then storage and loading area here, but we're talking about a sales floor area of a little over 18,000 square feet. And then if you could go to the elevation, John. In addition to looking at the, how that footprint change affects the site, as planning commission, you're also charged with looking at the exterior elevations and concluding that this plan would be compatible with the overall theme of the development. So this is what is proposed in the way of elevations, and so this is the existing Kohl's store here. It would appear to be a physical connection, although technically almost a separate building. The orientation to the front, this is what you would see from the south side, and then the rear elevation from I-135 would be blank, and then obviously no one's going to see what it looks like on the wall that connects to Kohl's. So that is there. But your role in this is to look at the amendment to see if we're supposed to prepare and transmit to you our findings to which, the extent to which the site plan complies with parking, signage, and landscaping regulations. So John, if you could put up possible conditions of approval, we'll kind of walk through those. Just by way of information, the Kohl's store building is 24 feet tall. This would be 24 feet tall, that parapet in front would be 34 feet tall. So our recommendations is we think that this change is consistent with the overall character of the planned development district and would recommend its approval. The only two items that we had concerned about was further elimination of landscaped area if that could be avoided, and it could be by retaining that landscape island along the south boundary of the parking lot, and the conflicts in the loading area that are potential could be eliminated by getting rid of those 16 spaces. We would look at the rear trash enclosures and loading docks to make sure those are screened from I-135, and signage would be limited to what is building wall signs that you see in those elevations. Fourth item deals with our local land disturbance and erosion control requirements, and then we would expect that the development would occur consistent with the plans that have been presented to you today, and that those would be binding on the development, so they couldn't change exterior building materials or modify anything from what has been presented to you today. We have Steve Panko here from Chicago representing Salina Partners LLC Development Group, which would be available for specific questions you have about the prospective tenant or details of the plan, but we think with those conditions and those minor revisions to the plan, that it's in order for your consideration as an amendment to the original plan. And with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Questions of staff?
I have one. Can you show on the overhead where the 36 surplus spots, parking lots, parking spaces are?
I wish I could exactly because we didn't include specific Longhorn plans, but if you could go back to the preliminary plan, John. Go to the one that shows that well, we'll use that. But basically, if you recall, there was a lot split here, and there's a tract right down here, and then basically from here up is Longhorns, and they have a number of spaces on their back side over here that are over and above what they're required to have as a restaurant of that size. So for their seating area and size, they're required to have 81 spaces, and they constructed 117 there, and so what we've agreed to do on this development is look at the total parking requirement for lots 1 and 2 in total, and just look to see that there are enough spaces within the development to meet all the needs. But the surplus spaces are right over here.
And so it's obvious that it's not a concern. Otherwise, you would have voiced this, but I'm going to ask anyway, that it doesn't concern you then that some pedestrian traffic would have to cross over that area that feeds in from Planet to come back this way if they were to utilize those 36 or needed it, needed those 36 spots?
It is a fact, but at the same time, we have similar arrangements like Chili's and IHOP have arrangements where you can park in the Central Mall parking lot, and then you have to drive across the Central Mall Ring Road to get over to Chili's or IHOP. So what we look at is distance, and the distance of those spaces is within the distance that we would consider able to serve that. Is it likely that people are going to park there? No. Is it likely, I mean, if you look at this line right here, these spaces right here and these spaces right here belong to Kohl's. I would imagine that there's a lot of Ross Stores customers who will use them, and so by going to the shared parking campus parking relationship that they have, it basically allows us to look at this as all one development for parking purposes, and that's what we've done. So it's not very realistic to think that somebody, this space right here under the previous setup belonged to Kohl's, and it's pretty darn close to the front door to Ross Stores, so I assume their customers are going to use it. So by getting rid of all these lines and saying all these spaces in here are available for customers of all the tenants, that's the approach that the developers taken, and that's the approach that we've looked at in terms of parking.
Question if you will.
Sure.
Dean, just a quick question. Is there any requirement in our city for a similarity of design or construction materials on adjoining buildings as there is in some communities, and is that part of this development or not? Because it appeared from the front elevation, there's some differences in the appearance between Kohl's and this particular facility.
There is some slight difference, but the, on page four of your report, it says that no plain precast concrete panels, metal siding, vinyl siding, or lap siding shall be permitted within this district. The city may deny or restrict the use of other exterior building materials that would be inconsistent with the design theme with the district. So that is a, we've looked at it. It is primarily ephors stucco and cut stone, which is similar as far as the exterior materials to the Kohl's store and to Longhorns Restaurant, which has a combination of brick and also some cut stone. But the materials here are ephors and cut stone, and so in terms of your question, does that have to do with the coloration or so much as the materials?
Both, coloration and materials. If they're dissimilar materials, it just doesn't look, I mean, some communities require certain material used to make the buildings look somewhat similar, and my...
Materials are consistent. What you're looking at is the coloration or the contrast. So this, and this is the coloration and the materials for Kohl's. This is, and maybe Mr. Panko could address whether that is a Ross Stores standard design or whether it was designed specifically to fit into this development, but the language in this development is that the city may deny or restrict the use of exterior building materials that would be inconsistent with the design theme within the district. So if there's a concern about, I don't think there's a concern about the exterior materials because they are consistent. The only thing that would be a contrast would be the coloration or color scheme, and you as planning commissioners are entitled to have an opinion about that, and that's part of your review is to look at the compatibility and the consistency with the design theme of the district. So first, I think we should hear from Mr. Panko about what drove the design appearance, and then if you have any specific questions about coloration, contrast, or materials, those could be addressed to him.
He's ready to roll. Are there any more questions of the staff? We'll hear from the applicant, please. And if you'd please just state your name and address for the records.
Hi, my name is Steve Panko of Salina Partners LLC, and I want to say thank you for accommodating my schedule. So in addressing the question regarding Ross, this is their prototype, and we've been going back and forth with the Ross representatives on this particular design. So this is what, you know, what they have approved internally as of yesterday, and they stick with their prototype throughout the country, and so that's why we're going back and forth, and we're trying to match the colors as much as we can with the beige and the browns and some of the brickwork. So I actually think it's as nice or very compatible with the Kohl's. I was just out there just now, so hopefully that helps.
What's your actual timeline, assuming you get approval here?
That's a good question. We're trying to push this through right now. They're pretty rigid. A lot of these retailers are getting more and more rigid since '08, late '08. It's either going to be an August 28 delivery, which at this point in time is, it's almost unrealistic. It might be unrealistic. So the next date, the delivery date would be February 10th, and they only take deliveries three days a year, and those are two, I think the other one's June something.
Do you have any problem with the six latest revised recommended conditions?
No, I don't. I appreciate staff working with me here. We've been working, when we cut the Longhorn deal, that deal was specifically cut in mind for this potential. Ross has expressed interest. They're one of the few retailers that are expanding at this time, so we're excited to be in front of you and whatever we can do to try to make this work, that'd be great.
Yes, we kind of foresaw the importance of being able to take a campus-wide approach to parking and look at this as a single unified development, so that, those things are all in place now in anticipation of this.
While it wouldn't be, I'm sure you've considered this, but on the drawings, it's hard to tell. Truck, delivery truck traffic is accommodated for in this expansion without any problem?
Yes. There is not a problem. It's very much a concern. It's very much a concern for Ross, and it's very much a concern for Kohl's. So I still need Kohl's approval to sign off on all this. They have it now, but this is one of the latest renditions in making sure that the truck deliveries and the semis are able to circulate around. And so, yes, we are addressing that. This will not happen without truck circulation.
Our thought on these 16 spaces back here is that people are more likely to park here and see and be aware of that than they would be back here, and if you had, even if you had employees back there, by eliminating those spaces, it takes any concerns about truck circulation and rear loading area off the table. So we think that they can meet the parking needs without having to resort to those, having their 16 spaces, so it makes that rear area exclusively for truck circulation and loading and unloading.
There's some shared drive consideration that you'll work through though.
We are working, yes, absolutely.
Is the area between Longhorn and Subway, that's part of this development also, Dean?
Yes, with the planning commission, when you reviewed the plans for Longhorn Steakhouse, right across from this drive right here is the South Drive for Longhorns, and there's a track two right here that has, you could have a small retail footprint there just south of Longhorns, and if that were done, that would pretty well complete this development.
Yes. We wouldn't want to run into parking problems at that time with the size of the footprint?
No, we have worked through all those over there to avoid that because we knew this was coming here. So that is addressed by all the reciprocal parking agreements. It basically says this whole, this whole area is one big parking district, and users and tenants and employees for all the uses can park anywhere, which is a similar arrangement to what you'd have at Central Mall or Midstate or places like that. The difference being here is we have multiple leasers or multiple owners, but even though there's multiple owners, there's a single unified parking campus plan.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any community members that want to comment on the application? If there are none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Chairman, about four and a half years ago, I was up here as the city commissioner that had to make the decision whether we were going to have this subdivision or not. It came down to, came around to me on the roll call vote with a 2-2 tie, and I had very mixed emotions and did go ahead and cast the third vote in favor of the whole TIF situation for this subdivision. I'm pleased to see that it has worked out as well as it has. It's my understanding that the tax income thus far has actually exceeded the projections. So with this store being larger than originally proposed, and if it's on this tight a schedule and is successful, so that it's up and operating by early next year, that will all add up to a very successful TIF program for this subdivision, and those obligations ought to be paid off in advance. So I think this particular proposal's well put together. I think the design is going to be very compatible with the other two major tenants in the subdivision, and I would move that application PDD 08-2B be approved with the six latest conditions as proposed by staff.
Before we have a vote on that, could I just check with Mr. Perney, or actually with Mr. Panko and see that is the plan for Ross to be able to put their signs on the exterior pylon signs that Kohl's has?
Yeah, and actually, the Longhorn has the tenant number two, and they're up now, and Ross would have the next two spots, and then the last outlot user would have the last two spots, and we'd be done, so.
I just wanted to make sure that what that condition means is that no additional ground or pole signs, that we will just have the wall signs.
Right, but there are big wall signs that are visible from the freeway as well as from Ninth Street, according to those elevations we saw.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify for the vote that you are approving this with the idea that they're not putting up new pole or ground signs, just using the existing, so.
Yes, sir.
We have a second, or we already got a second?
If there are other comments from the commissioners, we'll take that before I accept the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We pass that item.
Eight, zero in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. We will move back to the regular order of the agenda, public hearing items, application CU 12-2. Dean, is there a staff report?
I think Mr. Hirs will have this if it's a continuation from our last meeting agenda. agenda.
The legal description for this property is Lot 13, Block 28 of the Reimboldt Military replaid to the City of Salina. It is a single lot that has a width of 40 feet and a depth of 110 feet for a total square foot area of 4,400 square feet with an existing building that's 1,657 square feet. No. How did he get turned on? Oh, there we go. The building in question that we're looking at for the conditional use permit was built in 1963 as a contractor's office. And the short history behind the conditional use permit application is the fire department, during their annual reviews here less than a year ago or so, noticed that the commercial property was being used as residential property. So we contacted the owners with a couple of options. One option being that they could come to you with a conditional use permit request to use the C5 commercial property as a residential unit, or they could rezone the commercial C5 property to an R2 property. Here's a picture of the existing area and the surrounding neighborhood. You'll notice that most of the houses, actually, all of the houses surrounding the commercial property, although they are also zoned C5, they are residential properties that have been grandfathered in and have never been used for commercial properties and purposes. There's a driveway coming in off of Ninth Street that goes all the way back from, basically, Ninth Street to the very, almost the very end of the property on the east side. We have a sight plane, John. This probably gets you a better view, just looking at it from the top. So you come in off of Ninth Street here, and there's a driveway and a paved patio on the east end of the building. It's 26 feet wide and a little over 62 feet deep. There's a four-foot setback on the south side, a 10-foot setback on the north, a little over 25 feet along the Ninth Street side, and a 20-foot setback on the rear. When looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, the applicant states that the residential use of the property will generate less traffic than the previous commercial uses did, less noise, and will eliminate a lot of the outdoor storage that took place with the contractor's office that was there before. Staff would agree that the residential use would decrease a lot of the come-and-go traffic that you typically would find with a commercial property. And the outdoor storage would be limited to more of the items that would be residential in character and not commercial in character, like there were before with washing machines and other appliances that were necessary for the contractor's office. When we look at the impact of the surrounding neighborhood, the applicant argues that a business operated from this address that had extra machinery and supplies and were stored behind the structure had a detrimental effect, or more detrimental effect than the residential property would. Currently, the only items that are outside are, as you see in this photograph here, mainly a picnic table, another table, a grill, and yet a third table just for guests to use and sit outside during warm climate weathers. The public utilities and services, the building is an existing building. They aren't proposing to change any of the utility services, so the impact shouldn't be changed or modified from what we currently have today. The traffic and access, again, the parking is existing parking, but rather than having commercial vans and customers coming and going at different parts of the day, will be limited to just the residents and their guests whenever they would come and visit, which would be a little more limited situation than what it was when it was operating as a commercial property. The site visit that staff conducted prior to writing the staff report was done on March 5th and included building inspection personnel as well as fire and then planning staff. During that site visit, planning staff didn't find any issues other than the legal use of the property. The setbacks are all pre-existing and compatible with the other residential buildings that are in the neighborhood, while there are a few minor structural deficiencies that need to be corrected in order to meet all of the building safety and fire safety requirements. Those items would be smoke detectors and groundfall receptacles in the bathroom and kitchen, and the enlargement of the bedroom windows to ensure safe egress if an emergency or fire situation were to occur. There's a list of alternative actions that the board could take for this particular application. Staff's recommendation after reviewing the property, the site inspection, and visiting with other staff personnel in building services and the fire department is that we would recommend approval of the application with the condition that all of the life safety requirements from building services and the fire department be met prior to the completion of the conditional use permit, as a condition of the conditional use permit. Are there any questions of staff?
Did you say that adjoining on each side, is that R2 now? Or did you tell me that was commercial as well?
Well, it's zone commercial, but it's used residentially. Is there a, do we have a zoning map?
Yeah, there's one in the packet.
Here's a pretty good. The C5 is to the south and to the west of this black line here. So you have, the property is along Pacific here that are the service commercial, and then the property's working north to the subject property that we're dealing with are all C5 as well. However, the other structures along the Ninth Street side here that are adjacent to the subject property are being used currently as residential dwellings. And they have, as far as we know, since, prior to them being rezoned to C5 back in 1977. So they basically are pre-existing, non-conforming, grandfathered residential units that have always operated as residential units, and that's why they would need to have a conditional use like we do here. The property to the north and all of the properties then to the east are all R2 multifamily residential. So it is a residential neighborhood with the exception of the properties on the corner.
Dustin, what's the advantage of leaving that C5? I'm not seeing why C5 is even there. It's all residential. It's all being occupied as residential. And is there an advantage to the city of leaving that C5? Or is it an advantage to the property owners to leave it C5?
I think, and the applicant can speak more to that topic, but it's our understanding that the applicant would rather keep it at C5 just to have more flexibility and options if they ever decided to divest of the property or sell the property. Because then a contractor's office would be able to go back in there, or somebody could continue a residential use if you were to approve the conditional use permit to allow it to be used as residential property. I think as far as why it was zone C5 to begin with, I think it had more to do with the proximity to a major intersection of two arterial streets than anything else.
Gateway.
I think my initial thought was, why wouldn't that go all to R2? But as I think about it, if there is a revitalization effort in North Salina, it would be nice if we could relocate those homes somewhere else and have a C5 as a gateway coming in. But my first thought was, I wish they would replaid it all residential if that's where it is. But then again, I think it makes an opening for that revitalization on that corner.
I think that dates back to a time when, when a lot of the city was remapped and the planning commission looked at corners like Crawford and Ninth. You've got some residential homes on Ninth Street at Crawford that are zoned C5, but they're homes. And what you see happen is, as things change, rather than having the commercial hemmed in and inability to expand or change, the planning commission built in expansion areas at these arterial intersections. So if somebody had a plan that required assembling a certain amount of commercial property, it's already, the zoning's already in place. There's no harm to the people who have residences that are zoned C5, other than they're at risk that somebody could tear down the house next to them and do something different. But that happened at Ninth and Crawford, when we went from a small service station to Green Lantern to Casey's. And so as you see those, and the same thing happened at Iron in Ohio, as those intersections, the uses need more footprint. You either acquire and have zoning battles trying to get more property rezoned, or the zoning's already in place, which tells them, if you buy this property, commercial expansion is supported.
But isn't it true that when those people's home, say 28, would come through like it did last week and tear them down, they wouldn't be able to rebuild residential?
They would not be able to rebuild as residential without a conditional use permit by the planning commission, the same as we're standing here today. And you decide whether you thought that was appropriate in a commercial district, or it needed to be commercial.
I wouldn't tell no. Other questions of staff? May we hear from the applicant? Pre-existing, non-conforming, that's the name for your new band.
My name's Clifford Johnson. I'm the owner of the building, and it is practically fireproof. And the only thing that's wood in it is the doors and a partition in the back of the building. And the roof is two by 12, one right after the other. So the fire would get in there, they couldn't spread all the way across. And I object to the windows. I'm not in favor of putting the windows in. On account, maybe about 25% of the people couldn't even use them. Old people, fat people. So that's my objection. That's all I have to say.
I think mostly the window situation is so a fireman can enter, not necessarily the exit of the person that's in there. Is that, would that be your assessment?
Well, there's other windows in there, and the front is all glass.
That is the purpose. The city code requires bedrooms.
In that cupboard place, that's all glass. And to go to the window or to the door, front door, is about the same distance to the bed. I'd go out the door. And all the partitions are of a tadeite block.
I do have a dog, and I can tell you, I wouldn't lift him 44 inches out the window. My only concern with the windows, the bedroom windows that are in what I consider the master bedroom are mine, are 33 by 17 right now. The one in what would be used as a guest room, if that's what I chose to use it for, it's not used as a bedroom presently, is 48 by 17. And I'm concerned about the cost of the second bedroom, cutting that block 48 all the way down, the cost of that window is going to be astronomical, is my only concern. Other than that, all of the smoke alarms have been installed, the CO detector, all those have been installed. We're basically just kind of teetering on the windows.
Our response to that is it's not really a discretionary item for the planning commission, as if this were zoned residential, and this was not before you today, it would still not be legal for them to occupy that space for sleeping rooms without the egress. And also, the minimum housing code requires that all sleeping areas have to have a means of natural light, so that people aren't sleeping in closets, that they are sleeping in a place that has, the window serves the purpose of emergency access for the fire department coming in, and also for natural light to come in.
The photograph you see on the screen is the south side of the building, which is the side that the bedrooms are located on. So those are the bedroom windows that we're looking at right there, the existing ones.
Other questions of the applicant or comments?
I'm going.
Well, again, you're against our code of taking out those floor windows on the side there.
Actually, there's only, it's only two. Am I correct?
One in each room.
Yeah. Now, right across from what is my room is a huge plate glass window that goes from ceiling to floor. And I realize that probably doesn't make any difference, but if we were talking about the firemen getting in, believe me, or me getting out, I would not think twice if knocking out that plate glass window, if it got right down to it. I'd probably use the door because it's right there, but you can't hardly see the window. It's in front of the second vehicle in the drive.
Is the window in your bedroom?
There, right there.
Is the window in the bedroom, though, or in the living room?
No, it is actually in the dining room, which is on, there's a half a wall, you know, that separates.
I think it's hard to believe, but if there were a fire in your doorway, and you couldn't get to the plate glass window, and your only option was to get out through there, and you had some sort of smoke damage, and you were laying on the floor, and a fireman couldn't enter the dwelling, now we have to, you know.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's a life safety issue.
Yeah.
It's not anything that's on there.
Is there anyone from the community or the gallery that'd like to address this application? There being none, I'll bring it back to the commission for consideration. Gentlemen, your comments or a recommendation, a motion?
I'd just say I have no problem at all with it being used as residential. I think it fits into the neighborhood as under PDD as it is. I'd like, I think sometime needs to look at that whole area, as far as is it zoned properly, but that's for another day. But I do have issue with the windows. I think the fire code, we, it's not something, Dean has said we have an option to deviate from, nor should we, since it's a life safety issue. So that would be my thoughts, and I'd be prepared to make a motion whenever.
Any other remarks, gentlemen? I'll accept the motion that you want to make.
I'd make a motion that we approve application CU 12-2 with the conditions as stated by staff recommendation to include the life safety issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, would you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'll excuse myself for the next application due to conflict of interest as a property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. We'll move on to application CU 03-2B. Staff, the report there?
Fortunately, our staff report's not going to be as long as the written material that you were furnished. However, we give you all the background because there is so much background. And the hospice project was somewhat controversial when it was first before the planning commission and was given very careful scrutiny, both by the planning commission, and it ended up being finally reviewed by the city commission. And part of the controversy had to do with Holly Lane and the financing and construction of Holly Lane. Part of it had to do with the perception that nothing should happen or be developed in this area. And part of the history that you'll see there is that the, what's called River Meadows addition, was initially conceived as a residential housing area on the west side of Holly Lane to match the lots on the east side. And then it turned out to be the site of the hospice facility. And so, one of the first things that we ran into was the, knowing clearly, since Salina didn't have one, that was a residential type hospice. The first part was educating staff and the commission as to what the hospice is, or what that use consists of. And a hospice is a pretty low intensity, quiet, tranquil use, that has both medical and residential components to it. And when we reviewed it initially, we found that it was very close to nursing homes and group care facilities, which are conditional uses in the R single-family district. So the original hospice was approved under those parameters, and what was presented to the commission and the neighbors at that time. And so recently, representatives of Salina Regional Health Center, their architect, met with the city's development review team to discuss their plans for relocating Veridian Behavioral Health offices and clinic space from currently the Santa Fe Medical Plaza at 501 South Santa Fe, to the hospice facility on Holly Lane. And the view expressed by the health center was that the hospice space, which has a total of 12 living units in it, has been underutilized since the time it first opened in 2007. So city staff reviewed the regional health center's plans to relocate office and clinical space to the existing hospice facility. And the planning staff concluded that this would be a change in character and intensity of use from a facility that is primarily residential in character, to one where administrative offices and clinical treatment space would become the predominant use. So, one way to measure that, or look at that, is total square footage. And so, today, you have two wings that have, each contain two rooms and four suites. And Wing A, which is the south wing, no changes are proposed. Wing B, which is the west wing, and currently has two rooms and four suites, those would be converted and occupied by offices for the hospice center. The health center's plan is to convert Wing B to that space, taking the existing hospice office space and making that office space for Veridian. In addition, the health center's proposing to convert the basement area, which is currently used for storage, to additional office and clinical space for Veridian. So, if you summarize that, you look at, and I don't know, do you have the colored floor plan that they had in the packets, John, or that, that was an older plan, but I didn't know if we had that available. But this, this is the plan that the planning commission saw in 2003. And so, you've got patient wing A, the south wing, patient wing B, the west wing, and this is office wing. These are offices for hospice. The idea is to take this, convert it to offices for hospice. This becomes office space for the Veridian Behavioral Health. And then the basement, which is currently storage, would also be converted to some offices and clinical space. So, a hospice, and a hospital, and a hospital-related facilities are all things that you can apply for a conditional use permit for in an R single-family district. The concern that planning staff had was the application that was filed in 2003 was for a hospice and not for associated other hospital-related clinical or office uses. So we felt that what was appropriate here was that neighborhood property owners be notified, have notice and opportunity to comment on the proposed change. And therefore, this application was filed and a public hearing scheduled. So what you are to look at as commissioners is if this proposed change in use would have a negative impact on surrounding neighborhood, and to look at the specific plan for use of the space and parking, to determine whether that's compatible with its surroundings. And John, I'm going to jump to what's identified as the supplemental staff report, if you have that. I'm just going to walk through this on the screen, because this should be the focus of any public comment and any deliberations by the planning commission. These are the things that you are to look at in terms of findings or findings of fact. So the first thing to look at is, will the proposed conditional use comply with all applicable zoning ordinance requirements? Of course, this was reviewed originally in 2003, and is an existing built building, and everything about it, the building location, the footprint, the setbacks, the lock coverage, all of that conforms with the R district requirements, and they're not changing or proposing to change anything to do with the footprint. The existing landscaping and parking that's in place conform with the ordinance and the site plan that the planning and city commissions approved. One of the stipulations in the R district is that the more intense uses, like nursing homes, hospitals, have to be directly accessible from a collector arterial street. That question was already asked and answered in 2003. Both the planning commission, city commission, and staff felt that hospice site was directly accessible to Crawford via Holly Lane. The other thing you were to look at is whether the proposed conditional use will contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. The hospice center has contributed to the welfare and convenience of the public by providing a new, an expanded service for patients facing terminal illness, both in the Salina community and region. And that would continue, but on a reduced scale. The applicant, being the Salina Regional Health Center, believes that the services offered by Veridian Behavioral Health will also contribute to the health and well-being of the Salina community. Item three there is probably the nuts and bolts of today's discussion. Planning commission has found that the proposed conditional use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood, that it will not dominate the immediate neighborhood. So, when the hospice facility was proposed in 2003, this property was vacant, inaccessible. The lots on the east side were equally inaccessible and undevelopable. And had hospice not occurred, you'd still have a dirt path there, and no street access, and the lots on the east side would still be undevelopable. So it's pretty hard to argue that what hospice has done has damaged the lots across the street, given that the hospice project is what enabled those lots to become developable. So hospice actually increased the value of those lots, not diminished it. I think you're familiar with the setting. It's a pretty isolated and remote site, even though it is sitting right south of Crawford Street. You've got a busy intersection, Ohio and Crawford, and Bill Burke Park and the river are impacts on that. You also have a row of homes on top of the hill there, along Victoria Heights Terrace. If you're looking at property most directly impacted by the activity that occurs at the hospice site, it would be the Morse property, the residential dwelling there at 731 Holly Lane, which is directly across the street. And then you have four vacant residential lots directly across the street. So, again, there was a lot of scrutiny by staff, planning commissioners, city commissioners, and every effort was made to design a building that was residential in materials and character and appearance. It's low profile, it's got a hipped roof. Efforts were made to screen the building and parking lot. And so, considering that, 10 single-family homes could have been built on that side of the street. Most commissioners who voted in favor of it believe that the impact of hospice was actually less than having 10 homes over there across the street. So we're not proposing to change to the exterior appearance or the footprint. What we're talking about is the substitution of office and clinical space for living space, and the conversion of basement from storage space to office. And this is clearly going to increase traffic flow, it's going to increase the activity level. Staff believes that if the applicant could mitigate this by adding the parking on the north side of the building, which is what's being proposed, and reorienting the main patient entrance to the north side as well, that would certainly help buffer or screen the activity level from people across the street to the east. So the question for the planning commission is whether the addition of office space would so change the character of the facility that would damage the peace, enjoyment, and value of neighboring properties. We're also supposed, John, if you could hold on a sec, and go to four. The, also supposed to look and find that off-street parking and loading areas will be provided. It's not in your packet, but we have an opportunity to run through all of that. And with the 33 additional spaces proposed on the north, they would have more than adequate parking to support both uses. That would result in 62 off-street parking spaces. And by our calculations, the zoning ordinance would require them to provide 56. So, parking, well, it has an impact, it's not an issue as far as providing adequate parking. And the existing east side parking is screened. If the other parking's on the other side of the building, then that would be considered screened. Okay, John, you can go to five. You're supposed to look at utilities, drainage, and other necessary facilities. All of those exist and are adequate to serve whatever use is at that facility. And then the other aspect is adequate access drives, and the, there's no change to driveway locations or things like that. There's certainly going to be an impact as far as usage in terms of comings and goings compared to the relative quiet of the hospice. We have done some preliminary calculations using trip generation rates, and our preliminary conclusion is, if you added the Veridian space as proposed, it would add about 60 additional vehicle trips a day in and out of this site, from what you have today.
60's 30 in and out, or 60's 120?
60 is, is a trip in, so every trip in is a trip out. So it, you would double that. Coming down from Crawford to Holly would be 60 additional vehicle trips a day, over and above what is happening today. And that, that's just some preliminary numbers based on the square footage of space that Veridian would occupy. What we've identified for your options are, certainly approve this with whatever conditions you believe are appropriate. You could approve this with revisions being made to the plan presented by Salina Regional Health Center. You could postpone consideration of the application if additional information is needed about traffic, or parking, or building entrances. You could deny the application if you feel the required findings cannot be made, or if you think this change in use should not be allowed, because it would be incompatible with this particular neighborhood. So, those are the four items. This is a scheduled public hearing. We tried to outline findings of fact, the factors that you are to look at. We think most of them are non-issues, and that the, most of the discussion that'll hear today will get back to compatibility and impact on neighboring properties. So with that, I would be open to any questions you have about background. We just felt like it was important to give the commissioners the background, to see how much deliberation and different steps were involved in getting from a vacant lot. I think one thing that might be overlooked is, and it was, it was Matt Wagner who did that initially, but did a lot of work with FEMA, the Corps of Engineers, and everything to get the footprint done, and to get all the necessary approvals to make the west side of Holly Lane developable. And that, that was really the hard part that was done. And the other thing that I, that, John, if you could go back to that, the other aspect of this was, this is the proposed rebranding. This, obviously, is what was presented to the planning commission as the design theme, and the signage proposed in 2003. And the idea is to repurpose those existing signs. One of the unique things, and this was done by the Board of Zoning Appeals, is that we have a 18-foot tall ground sign out on Crawford. And the normal limitation for the height of a ground sign is six feet, but because the sign is down in a hole, the sign was approved to be taller, otherwise you wouldn't be able to see it from Crawford Street. So, that is what we call a ground sign, and not a pole sign, it's just an unusually long ground sign. So, I think with that, you've got, had lots of material sent out to digest, and if there's anything I can do to help clarify the extent of the change or proposal, we'll do that. But we've got plenty of interested citizens who'd like to comment as well.
Dean, one of the things I took from the background, and I'd like you to tell me if I'm reading it right, is that it was Wagner's intent for this area to be residential to begin with, and that effort failed because of cost constraints and the aspects of moving all the dirt in there. Then it sat empty for a considerable period of time, and a trust before this match was made.
It was plotted for 10, 10 lots, and then the, there was a purchaser who purchased all the plans and everything from Matt Wagner, and tried to make a go of it with 14 lots. But the, the special assessments, the cost per lot, which also involves some separate utility work and things of that nature, and extended much farther south, made it unfeasible. And the, the setting, the river, the openness, made it very attractive to the hospice board in terms of a setting for a hospice-type facility, most of which are in communities are located in pretty natural or tranquil areas. And so, this, this was chosen as the site for the hospice, partially because of the tranquil area and the natural area between it and the river.
Other questions of staff? Yes. We'd like to hear from the applicant, then, the hospital, please, and Veridian.
Mr. Henen Camp, you're representing the hospital.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Henen Camp. I'm a representative of Salina Regional Health Center, located at 400 South Santa Fe. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the planning commission here for allowing this session today and being here to hear it. I'd also like to thank city staff. They were instrumental in helping us prepare this application, providing the necessary materials and background that was useful for us. I think the request and the communication, to me, seems fairly straightforward. We're coming before you requesting favorable consideration to allow our Veridian program to occupy space at our hospice facility at 730 Holly Lane. It is with regret we find ourselves in this position. Obviously, the original hope for the development, not only of that facility, but enough to take it to 24 inpatient beds, rather than the 12 that were initially established, was that there would be volumes that would support that. After five years, we opened in July of 2007, we found ourselves realizing unsustainable losses in the facility, and find ourselves... losses in the facility, and find ourselves in a position to improve the use of the facility through a programs that the hospital has that we feel would not, would, would benefit the community and, and in our opinion, not harm the neighborhood. I, I think the one thing I might further address is there's, there's a thought that it would increase the activity in that area, and we certainly wouldn't deny that. Obviously, with the low volumes of activity we've had at that existing facility, it has been relatively inactive or comparatively inactive to what was hoped or intended. Our thought and our belief is, and we don't disagree with the number of, of trips that Dean has, has noted, as being roughly 60, is probably accurate of what we would see at that location. But originally, the facility was intended to go, or allowed to go up with expansion up to 24 beds. We do not feel what we're proposing here would have ever exceeded that if it had met that full potential. There's quite a bit of other information here, but rather than continue on in that, I, I think our request is fairly straightforward. But I would be happy to respond to questions that you would have specific to that. I might note that I brought Linda Simpson and David Morris of our Veridian facility with us, and Benny Solkill, who is the director of hospice, that could also answer questions you might have specific to that that would be relevant.
Questions, gentlemen?
Just, I think you said this, but how much traffic does hospice have as a 12-bed facility, since we envisioned it as 24, but it's been half?
A big, what was that last part, Mr. Ryan?
It was envisioned as 24, but it's kind of operated as 12. Well, how much has that had in traffic terms?
I might rely on, on Benny Solkill, if he would come up and tell us what that volume is. I, I can tell you, very low. He may be able to give you more specific numbers than that. Now, one thing I do want to point out is our intent at this time is not, not closing the inpatient hospice. And it would be great if at some time in the future, and when we're doing this area, Patient Wing B titled up there, we're doing the minimal changes we can to convert that into offices for the outpatient hospice staff that will work there, with the intent that we, if we could turn it back to an active outpatient hospice, we would do so. So, we're wanting to proceed cautiously with that. But we've got to recognize the history of five years as well. Benny?
Mr. Ryan, my name is Benny Solkill. I'm the director of hospice. We have never operated as a 12-bed facility. We have built it for the 12 beds. However, the patient load has never sustained 12 beds. So, the impact of traffic has been much less than was actually imagined in the beginning before it started. So, probably, on, on an average day, we'll have 20 to 30 cars in and out, depending on whether we have patients in, in and how big their families are.
Thank you. Any other questions from the, or addressed from the Veridian folks, or?
I think they'd be glad to respond if you had questions specific to the nature of the Veridian program, and they could respond to that. That may actually come up later after public comment. But they would respond now if there were any.
Can you correctly describe the current location as the Santa Fe Medical Plaza Building? Or are they in other locations?
The, the current location is on the third floor of the Santa Fe Medical Plaza at, I think it's?
501.
501 South Santa Fe. Something I might add to that, since Dean has wisely raised that up, is one of the reasons for the move is it's, it's a function that will fit out at the hospice facility. It's one that can be away from the hospital, and it has had enough growth that, that we do need to expand it, and we can have that, we have that amount of space readily and easily available at our hospice facility versus where we're, where we're at right now. So, that was also a driver, make better use of the facility and having a program that would, would fulfill that need.
Would you say that the, if I can call it the serenity of the area and the setting is conducive to the goals of Veridian as well?
You know, those would best be answered by David and Linda. My opinion is yes, but I'd be glad to have them address that.
Are there members of the community that'd like to address the commission? And if you would, please, for the record, your name and, and address, please?
My name's Dana Morris. Excuse me, 731 Holly Lane. I'm here speaking in opposition to the application. I want to start out by saying that Jack and I have known each other for years, and nothing I have to say today is directed toward Jack negatively, and, and nothing I have to say is really directed toward Veridian negatively. It's the location that Veridian is proposing to be that I have concerns about. I really have two major concerns. One of them's the safety and well-being of my family, and the other is the negative impact this move will have on my property values. Actually, I have a concern about traffic, but as I rehearsed my talk and thought, that's awfully long, I'm not going to address that today. I think staff's done a pretty good job addressing the traffic concerns. Jenny and I purchased that old farmhouse that was at the end of Holly Lane back in 99. And at that time, Matt Wagner had developed the lots. He'd already, now, I think, I'm assuming everybody knows where I live, and maybe that's not a good assumption. Yeah, right there. A little history, that house was built in 1907 and moved to that spot in 1951. So, it's, it's got some character. Again, Matt was trying to develop that as residential. He'd already built the little pads out in the field, because we remember watching the, the farmer who farmed it for quite a few years, four or five years, farming over those house pads. There are lots to the north and south of us that, at that time, were for sale. And just so it's kind of clear, on the east side of Holly Lane is Victoria Heights. That was the original, originally part of Victoria Heights. Actually, it still is. Our lot is lot two or three of Victoria Heights. So, when we moved down there, again, there were lots in what Matt was doing, and we kind of knew that we're going to have to share that serenity, that one day, we'd probably have to give up the great little gravel road we have and all the privacy we have. But we always assumed that it would be residential when that area developed. And I can tell you, had there been conditional uses down there or other zoning around there, we would have never bought that house. In, in my remembrance, in 2005, it was hospice made the application to come down there. They applied for a conditional use permit for that 12-bed facility. And Jenny and I, and quite a few other property owners in that area, came to a public meeting right here and expressed our concerns about it being used as non-residential. And despite those concerns, the, the planning commission approved that application. We were assured at that time that the only reason that application was ever approved was because hospice would be residential in nature, and it would be limited to a residential type use. We accepted that assurance from the city in good faith, and when that building was constructed, we paid our fair share of the special assessments, and we're still paying our fair share of special assessments. And, you know, we had to pay to have our utility lines relocated. One of the things that was kind of disappointing is that hospice had 17 acres, a big piece out there, says subject property with hospice, is about 17 acres on which they could build. And unfortunately, for Jenny and I, they chose the spot directly across from our front door as the spot they wanted to locate their, their building. I've, I've met with Veridian and, and Jack and staff, and they've talked to me about the patients and how compatible they'd be with our neighborhood. But I gotta tell you, I don't think it's appropriate for an organization of this nature to be in a residential neighborhood, especially when there's so many commercial areas in a community that, that could be used for this type of use, and especially on the two hospital campuses. Since we've been asked to accept Veridian in our residential area, I feel I must ask you guys how you would feel if you were in my situation. If you just asked yourself, would it be in my best interest or the best interest of my family or neighbors to have a, excuse me, to have a behavioral health clinic moving in next door? And please keep in mind, before you answer that question, that the clinic will operate days and evenings. It'll provide treatment for some court-ordered individuals with bipolar, anger management, substance abuse, and other behavioral issues. Another issue to be considered is that hospice provides playgrounds for the, the children there. Dean, I don't know if we can see that, but.
Yeah, you're about, you're pretty close.
They have a playground area there. In the time that that's been there, Jenny and I have noticed that there's a lot of kids that go out there and play, and they're just, they're unsupervised. The parents, grandparents, whoever is, is visiting there, feel that with the, the serenity of that area and what goes on, it's, it's safe to let them go out and, and play by themselves. If Veridian's allowed to operate at this facility, do you believe it'd be wise to continue that use? I, I don't. I wouldn't want my grandkids out there unsupervised. Again, the hospital was kind enough to have Jenny and I over to meet with them before they filed the application. And as is said in their application, and as Jack pointed out just a little bit ago, hospice has not performed the way that we all hoped it would perform. And so, they've had to subsidize it. But I really don't feel that surrendering our rights to feel safe in a neighborhood and to enjoy our home that we've worked for most of our lives should be our financial burden just because the hospital wants to shred or shed their financial burden. The Veridian staff said during the meeting that they would not hesitate to live next door to that operation. And I immediately offered my house for sale for the current appraised value, and alls I heard was silence. But I gotta tell you, if this is approved, that offer still stands, and you'll know why as I get a little further into some appraised value information I have. And again, hospice submitted, or the hospital admitted that that application, the change of use from the hospice facility to 75 percent residential, which is what we have now, to 100 percent commercial, is purely financial. And again, it just seems unfair or inappropriate for them to lift their financial burden and transfer it over onto the homeowners and property owners in that area. In my professional life, I've worked in planning and zoning for about 40 years, real estate. And, and I know for a fact that a change like this is going to have a negative effect on property values. And it's a conclusion of my talk, and there is a conclusion, bear with me. I'll present you with a letter from an appraiser that, in formulating her estimation of the impact on our home, interviewed 10 potential buyers. And of those 10, after it was explained that Veridian Services would be utilizing, or could be utilizing the facility next door, all 10 said they would not purchase the home. The conditional use application asks why the proposed use would not cause substantial injury to the value of the neighboring properties. The short version of the hospital's response is that the existing facility, an attractive development, will remain intact with no exterior changes other than parking. Well, I'm not here opposing that building. That building's there, and it, it is what it is. But I am protesting the proposed use. If the proposed use were a retirement home, physical rehab center, I'd most likely have a different opinion. With all the options for space in commercial zoned areas in Salina, it seems unlikely the hospital has truly considered the impact this move will have on residential, on our residential neighborhood. I think it's important to note, again, during that same meeting, I asked hospice, the hospital staff, what would happen in five years if hospice still can't pay their way? And the answer was, well, we can't predict the future. Well, to me, that's an indication that the hospital would not hesitate to close hospice and apply to convert the entire facility to a commercial use if they needed to, needed to do so to make a profit. Since the hospice lot consists of several acres, again, about 17, approval of this application could very easily pave the way for the hospital to apply for more unacceptable uses of the property in the future. Again, the conditional use application also asks how the proposed use will contribute to and promote the welfare and convenience of the public. Based on the hospital's response, it doesn't sound like the neighboring property owners are the public that they had in mind. Their answer is the proposed conditional use will continue to serve as a hospice facility as well as providing an appropriate setting for Veridian clients, thereby improving those persons' quality of life within the community to their benefit and to that of the public. This response does not address the welfare of my wife, my grandchildren, my property, myself, or the neighborhood. It addresses the welfare of Veridian's patients, who would receive the same benefit if they were provided services in a more suitable setting. I remember discussions years ago, and I think many of you do, when the city of Salina had hearings to discuss creating a hospital district. And that was to, when that was created, it allowed the, for the removal of quite a few residents, some businesses, and some historic buildings. The argument at that time from the hospital was that it needed a district to allow them to keep all their operations in one area so they could better manage their services and so clients and families could more easily find, find their services. It's my understanding that Veridian used to be off-site, and they were brought back onto campus to their current location so they could better manage, or to better serve their patients. Now, hospice has a financial problem, and the campus environment seems to no longer apply. I ask you to consider my two main points as you decide the fate of our residential area. The safety and well-being of my family will be threatened by this application. You'll be hearing from one professional counselor about his concerns regarding mixed use similar to this one that's being considered. And you've been handed out a few news articles that were pulled off the internet about the potential volatility of individuals suffering with bipolar disorders, anger issues, et I realize that not everyone with those types of disorders is violent and unstable, but it only takes one, and that's not a risk I'm willing to take for my family. Approval of this application will directly impact, have a direct impact on property values in, in the area. And I don't want you to think this is a protest by one property owner. There are several properties next to mine that are being planned for development and for a residential-type development. I'll also present you with two letters, one from a certified Kansas appraiser discussing the destruction of the property values in the area, especially my home, and the other one from a person who has a right of first refusal on my home, who states in his letter that he'll not exercise that right if this application is approved. Six years ago, we were told hospice would be a good neighbor. Since then, we've lived next door to a building that has no resemblance of a family home, a neighbor whose parking lights shine directly into our bedroom windows every night and our visitors smoke in the street. In my opinion, a good neighbor would not ask their neighbor to support this request to operate a behavioral health clinic whose use is 75 percent commercial. I, I just ask you, just kind of how much are we expected to bear in this area so that the hospital can make a profit? My mentors taught me over the years that I shouldn't just oppose something without some suggestion, so I have three here of possible alternatives. Again, it's been suggested that one of the reasons hospitals Salina, or, excuse me, hospice Salina is struggling financially is that there are two hospices, two hospice services in town. And one option would be to try and merge those two so that there's just one hospice, so that the facility there on Holly Lane could be better used. The hospital could use some underutilized rooms in the hospice center for another purpose such as physical rehab, sleep disorders or whatever, diagnosing sleep disorders or whatever they may have. Or they could sell the hospice facility and, or lease it to a nursing home or a physical rehab center. I know that the nursing homes here have like a two-year waiting list trying to get people in. I'm certainly not an expert on hospital services, but I can't help believe the hospital could not find a better use, and still a profitable one, that would fit a residential area more than Veridian. than Veridian. The property owners in the area and myself would be happy to sit down with the hospital representatives to discuss other options for the hospice building that would be more acceptable to us. And again, I apologize for the length of that, but I feel it's extremely important that you hear that. If I could approach the bench and hand this up.
Come up. Thank you for your comments, Dana.
And I've tapped and highlighted, highlighted the area I want you to read now. Highlighted what I think is kind of the synopsis of the...
We've got several copies here.
Oops. Sorry. Thank you.
Are there questions of Mr. Morris? From the commission? And there may be some later. Are there other remarks?
My name's Virginia Morris, and I live at 731 Holly Lane. I am retired, so I spend a lot of time at home. I have a couple little volunteer jobs, but most of the time I am working in the gardens or hanging my clothes out on the line or doing the same things my mom used to do. So I spend a lot of time at home. I'm concerned about the hospital's idea to place Veridian Counseling Center in the building with hospice. Because of that, I feel like I would have to give up some of the things that I do every day because there'll be so much activity and so many people. So I really won't feel that comfortable or possibly even being safe outside in the yard. Since our kids live in another state and our little grandkids are in preschool and kindergarten, they only get to come in the summer. And so when they come for a week or two in the summer, they like to go down to our river lot south of our house and play down there and play around the house. And with all of this, I don't really think I would feel safe, comfortable letting them out to play outside. Surrendering our rights to feel safe and endangering the safety of our little grandkids seems like a lot to ask of us. This type of business seems incompatible in a residential area and also incompatible as a partner for hospice, where patients and their grieving family members come to spend their remaining days in the quiet and serenity provided by our location. Veridian, with the type of service that they provide and the volume of traffic that will be generated, seems to make this a very poor match in a residential area. I ask that you deny this application.
Hi. I am Betsy Scolton, and I live at, my husband and I live at 700 Victoria Heights Terrace. Our home overlooks Holly Lane with a view west to the river. We are extremely opposed to the possibility of changing that area to 75% commercial use. We can imagine that if it were to happen, it would be very easy for a future planning commission to ease it to 100% commercial use. Most of the homes that are on Victoria Heights Terrace were designed to take full advantage of the open view west to the river. It's a unique, unpleasurable experience for all of us, and we enjoy it now, and we think it will be important to the resale value of our homes. So I urge you to consider my concern and not allow this change to take place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Scott Bergkamp. My address is 730 Victoria Heights Terrace. So my backyard backs up to the Morse's backyard. I too would request that you deny this application. I concur with the points that were brought up by my neighbors, and I would add a couple of things, and that is, you asked if the serenity at hospice would be good for the Veridian patients. I don't doubt that answer, but I would find it hard to believe that the Veridian patients would be good for the serenity of the hospice patients. The other thing, and if I understood staff correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned the, that there is commercial at the intersection of Crawford and Ohio, but there's also a very clear separation with the river between the proposed commercial area on Holly Lane and the commercial areas currently to the west of that. Thank you.
Neil Zuzas for 11 Scott. As a professional counselor for the past 25 years, I just simply want to say that I feel like that a program like this, moving into this area, is not compatible with a residential lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Deborah DiBiase. I live at 746 Victoria Heights. And I'm just a little point on the map over there. It doesn't mean as much to me in terms of mapping out that area. I can't really tell, and you can't really tell what this means to us as family. But we value that natural scenic area down below us, and I don't see it as negative for every square inch of Salina to be asphalted. And I feel like Salina Regional already has adequate parking and space for their Veridian services.
Thank you.
North MacArthur, and I also live at 746 Victoria Heights. We also have the two lots below that lot, six and seven. And as Dean was talking earlier today about the asphalting and getting the road available so that way the other lots could be developed, I'd like to also point out that they've been for sale at different times, lots one through six, or lots one through five, excuse me, and there's been signs up there and everything. And nobody's even, as far as I know, made an offer on any of those lots. So as far as putting in the asphalt to make everything more saleable, really, I think the only thing that the asphalt was put in there for was for the hospice facility. And I think to go ahead, and as my wife was talking, we have two children also, it's, there's so many places available, and the hospital owns so many places to put things, why would they go ahead and put behavioral health issues right next to a residential area and right in the middle of the city of Salina? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Todd Welsh, 221 South Morse Drive. The reason for me being up here, I am an adjoining landowner through a corporation called Land Corps. And I'll keep this short, but we own Lot 3 along Holly Lane, one more up, that's there. We first purchased that to build a single-family residence, only to find later that with the height of it and how that all works, it isn't very conducive for us to build a single-family in that portion. I've been working on an additional plan for almost two years. Lots one through two, there's a gentleman owns number two. We have spoke with him and have an agreed-upon price if we decide to develop this into a project, which again, this is making me reveal a project that you probably will see the same people in six months based on the project that we are working on currently that is residential, as well as talking to Mr. Knox, who owns the lot on number one, of combining those three and bringing a project in front of them. The reason it's taken us so long is we're trying to be very concerned about our rooftops and the height so we don't block their view of residential. The only reason that I come to you and say that is, the project that we're currently, that is at an architect right now being drawn up, is there will be garages that people will have to back out onto Holly Lane, which will be a residential street. Adding 60, you know, 60 trips is 60 in, 60 out. It makes a concern for what development that we have, which is a very unique development that's not in Salina right now. Those residential people will have to back out onto Holly Lane, which we would then proceed to a residential street, which maybe now turns into an arterial street of bringing that out onto that residential street. So again, I find myself in a strange place in the fact that I consider Jack a friend. I consider the hospital bringing the amount of economic impact they have in the last five years. I never thought I'd be speaking against the hospital because I thoroughly enjoy and think that they've done a phenomenal job in what they've done downtown. And you put me in front of homeowners that I would have to meet probably six months ago in a project that's coming forward. So again, with that being said, do you have any questions for me? Thank you for your time.
Are there others that would like to address the commission?
Good afternoon. I'm Brenda Gorman. I live at 705 Victoria Heights Terrace. And I believe that the neighborhood has already expressed my opinion on this project. I just ask that you deny the request. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Gentlemen, any questions for the...
I guess one more comment.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to say I do acknowledge the comments of the neighbors, and we did speak with Dana. A couple of, and I think had good conversations, and I appreciate the consider remarks that were made about the benefits Salina Regional Health Center has on the, on the community. What we're asking for does remain within the, as we understand it, the allowable conditional use for residential, for the zoning there. And I wouldn't disagree that while there are no doubt many places within and outside the community that Veridian or any function could be placed, this happens to be a building we own that is underperforming. And I think when we talk about what happens to a place, underperforming buildings that cannot be financially sustained, sometimes they're not the most attractive outcome either. So turning buildings into profitable use, or, and by profitable, what I'm meaning by that is functional use, where they're performing a service to the community such as Veridian and hospice provide, I think is a better outcome for that. I know we've talked about 75% commercial. I guess I'm seeing a 50% commercial, but nevertheless, regardless, it is certainly more than it is right now with the hospice, outpatient hospice offices we have. I mean, there's been a number of concerns expressed about the nature of the client that may be there. I don't know if that raises any concerns or should be further addressed, which is why we have our behavioral health personnel here to address that. But that's been raised by several folks here, and I think they'd be glad to address that if you have some questions specific to that.
Well, I have sort of a couple of questions in general for the pro and the con, and that would be one of mine, is that I'm not sure I'm taken in by the safety issues here. I'm not aware that there've been clients of Veridian or any other services of those types that have had problems in their neighborhoods, you know, on their campuses or around. So, and the two groups, hospice and Veridian, seem to me to be separated in this case. So I guess I'd like to hear them tell me more about the type of clients that they have and...
Are they really a threat?
I think they'll be glad to.
I'm Linda Simpson. I'm a psychiatric nurse and a licensed clinical professional counselor. Actually, I serve as director of psychiatric services for the hospital. This is David Morris.
Right. And I'm the team leader.
For, so he oversees the daily operations at Veridian. But one of the things, and I kind of wrote him down as they were talking, was I don't understand zoning. I kind of got lucky with my numbers, though, because when you were talking about the numbers, Dave and I crunched them, and we were pretty accurate. So I don't understand those pieces, but what I do understand is mental health and trying to advocate for them. Some of the things that I wanted to point out today is, is struggling with anxiety does not make you a criminal. Struggling with depression does not make you a criminal. And I know there's concerns about a playground, and I'm not for sure exactly what that's about either, but I think that would fall under the criminal behavior. We work with schoolteachers, doctors, lawyers, their wives, attorneys. We do a lot of marriage counseling. We work with kids. A lot of grief and loss. I'm trying to think of the people I'm working with this, this week. One's dying of cancer. I've got two teenage boys that go to high schools here that have lost, have broken up with their girlfriends. So I'm meeting with them today, talking about getting over the girlfriend. I've had people who've come in because their spouses have died, their kids have died, and so we work through all those issues. So grief and loss is huge in counseling, and so I think when we talked about partnering with hospice and with Benny and his team, we thought that made sense and it fit well together. The location's beautiful. So I hope that answers kind of who we serve and who we take care of, and I don't think we serve a bunch of criminals that are going to create a safety risk for people. Neil Zuzas and I worked together for 10 years at St. Francis Academy. So we worked adolescent psych, so I know where his background's coming from. But we don't run residential. We don't, we're not a psychiatric hospital, and so those concerns, I think, are, they don't pertain to the services we provide.
I'd agree with Linda. We do serve a different population than St. Francis. Most of the people that we serve are just the run-of-the-mill person in the street. We serve, I think, a wide gamut of people. I know 50% of my caseload is dealing with marriages. And I also know that in over 27 years working with people, about the most dangerous situation I've faced is from a nine-year-old kicking me who wanted to escape from his mom and otherwise perhaps a married couple yelling at each other a little bit, but that's about as dangerous as it's got.
One of the things that Jack's helped us with is our psychiatrists, we're moving them into the hospital. So our psychiatrists and med management's going to be managed through the hospital location. So it's just our therapists that are, that would be at the hospice location.
Would you generally agree with the number of traffic?
We, actually, we got pretty lucky because I didn't know about all this math and how that worked, but we were kind of crunching the numbers, and we thought it would be about 60 cars a day, so.
If I may, I think, as I said, we have a couple of issues here. One is the view and the serenity, and I'll discuss that a little bit later. The other is the safety issue. And to help me be specific with me, I think of a safety incident rising to level when police must be called. That's when it becomes a public safety issue at that level. How often does that happen at your current site in a given year?
I've been here five years. How many? I know of one, 20-some years. I can, I can think of one time in five years, in the five years that I've been here, and it was with a kiddo that was struggling with his mom.
Yeah. And I wasn't there for that day, but that's the only occurrence that's happened as far as...
So it's rare.
It's very rare.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other remarks, gentlemen?
When the hospice presentation was made, we were given a huge packet supporting the fact that it was going to be successful. And if the present status of medicine is somewhat uncertain, and if Veridian is not successful or goes out of business, then is the hospital then free to sell the building to another commercial use, and then a quick shop or something of that nature could go into that site?
One of the things that we try to do with a conditional use permit...
Would you generally agree with the number of traffic?
We, actually, we got pretty lucky, because I didn't know about all this math and how that worked, but we were kind of crunching the numbers, and we thought it would be about sixty cars a day, so.
If I may, I think, as I said, we have a couple of issues here. One is the view and the serenity, and I'll discuss that a little bit later. The other is the safety issue. And to help me be specific with me, I think of a safety incident rising to the level when police must be called. That's when it becomes a public safety issue at that level. How often does that happen at your current site in a given year?
I've been here five years. How many? I know of one...
Twenty-some years.
Twenty-some years. I can think of one time in five years, in the five years that I've been here, and it was with a kiddo that was struggling with his mom.
Yeah, and I wasn't there for that day, but that's the only occurrence that's happened as far as...
So, it's rare.
It's very rare.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other remarks, gentlemen?
When the hospice presentation was made, we were given a huge packet supporting the fact that it was going to be successful. And if the present status of medicine is somewhat uncertain, and if Veridian is not successful or goes out of business, then is the hospital then free to sell the building to another commercial use, and then a quick shop or something of that nature could go into that site?
One of the things that we try to do with a conditional use permit is to be very precise about what the use is that's being proposed and what's being approved. And what, one reason that we're here today at a public hearing is that we reviewed all the information that was presented to the planning commission and to the neighbors in 2003. And while this is a use that the hospital could have applied for in 2003, it's not a use that they presented in 2003, and that's why we think the public hearing is necessary today. If this were approved today, if they wanted to do anything that is outside the bounds of hospice and counseling and clinical space, that was not hospital-related, then there would be another hearing, or the property would have to be rezoned. But the one thing that has never changed is this property is zoned, single-family residential, and the only thing you can do on it is uses that are either permitted or conditional, and that's a pretty narrow list. Nursing homes, group care facilities, church, things of that nature could be located here, a school. But if that were proposed, we would be back here in front of the planning commission to consider whether it ought to be converted to a church, or a school, or a nursing home, or those things. So, every time a conditional use changes from what was initially proposed and approved, it would come back to the planning commission to be something different. And that's why we're here today.
Right. Well, I would ask that you not allow this to go forward.
So, the answer is this is not changing the zoning, and it's not opening the door to other commercial uses. This is specific to counseling, clinical space, and offices, and anything different than that would be dealt with in the same way.
Thank you, Dean. Are there further remarks?
I could just make a couple more. I don't think I mentioned view in my discussion, because I actually look at what hospice is today, and my views are really not going to change. I do have a concern, and I, hopefully I can convince you that there is a concern about safety. I did talk to Sheriff Kokonowski, just to ask him how many people, if he'd ever taken people over to Veridian, and he does, he has. Not a lot, but it doesn't take a lot. Again, he's hauling his inmates over for Veridian counseling, and that, if approved, that'll happen in our neighborhood. And while those with the sheriff's deputies there don't worry me much, others do, and I really think that is a concern. But I hope you'll put a lot of emphasis on what the appraiser said, and what the person that has the right of first refusal has on my home. If you ask just random property owners, would you move in to a facility that has behavioral clinic next door? Would you buy that home? And ten out of ten that she interviewed said no, that means that this does not meet the requirements for approval of a conditional use permit, that it does hurt the property values in the area. Thanks.
Just want to say I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand, in one of your lists of perhaps more agreeable uses, nursing home, was that, is that correct that I heard you say that?
Yes.
One of my concerns is the amount of traffic. I guess I was a little surprised by the number of visits, the ins and outs. Do you not see that a nursing home might generate about the same? If we could just talk about the traffic issue currently, do you see that as being similar or less?
I can only answer that in comparison to what I know happens at hospice. The hospice visitors are fairly long-term visitors. They're not a forty-five-minute visitor. They're grieving families. They spend the day there, in the evening. You know, they'll go away for dinner. I may drive, I'm not home, Jane can answer about lunch, but they'll, they'll may leave for lunch, they go to dinner, they come back, and it's like residential traffic. I've never lived next door to a nursing home, so I can't give you that specific answer, but I would see that as similar traffic. Certainly not constant coming and goings of foot traffic coming in, because I'm fairly convinced, although, again, I'm not the expert in that type of service, but from what I understand from Neil, many of the patients may not have a driver, some of the patients, I should say, may not have a driver's license, and will either take the Boston and foot traffic in, somebody will drop them off, because they may not have a driver's license. And so, it's quite a bit of just constant traffic going on, where I don't think a nursing home is the constant flow of people in and out every thirty or forty minutes.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I may, of Dean. Dean, when we talk about property value, how long, two questions asked one at a time, how long's that area been zoned residential? Now, I know the street's been developed for about five years. How long has it been zoned or platted for residential development?
Since the nineteen-seventies.
And how many new homes are in that area now?
None, not on Holly Lane.
Right, that's, none have been, because I don't know the area. I've been there, but I couldn't remember on the side of the street, whether there's any, there's not, the only home there is one, then.
Yeah, that is, Phil Martin is the subdivider, the developer of Victoria Heights. That was Phil Martin's family home, where Mr. Morse lives. That was there before the property was ever platted. So, as far as Holly Lane itself goes, there's been no construction of homes on Holly Lane itself since it was platted. And the, I can remember as far back as nineteen-eighty-nine, there were meetings in front of the planning commission, trying to figure out how Holly Lane could be built, because the street was needed, and there were homes on lots on only one side. And to do a benefit district in Salina, you need to get fifty-one percent of the property owners to be in favor of a benefit district, and as long as the opposite side of Holly Lane was undevelopable, or a Christmas tree farm, there was no prospect of getting Holly Lane built. So, it was the efforts of Matt Wagner to get River Meadows platted, and then the actual construction of hospice that allowed Holly Lane to be built. And so, the answer is that those lots have been platted and zoned since the seventies, but the lots on Holly Lane have only been buildable since 2004, when Holly Lane was constructed.
Has there been, anybody requested building permits for any of those lots?
I pointed out to Dustin.
It's the one?
Nobody requested a permit, but somebody did start building a home here without a permit, and that was stopped, and so that's why that looks like that today. But nobody, people on Holly Lane were consistently told they couldn't build, you can't build on this lot because it didn't have any street access. And so, before all this was done, there was a little gravel path that wandered down here and came to Mr. Morse's driveway, and that all changed when this street was built, which terminates right there. So, the answer is, the lots on the east side were undevelopable until 2004, even though they'd sat vacant longer than that. I've been talking to Leonard Knox about his lot since, for the last twenty-five years, so I know he's owned it that long.
Thank you. Available, or is it? Yes, sir. Come right up. Todd? Sorry.
Todd Welsh, again, I just want to let you know that with them not, with them being developable, we, I think I've owned it for two years. I would say it's safe to say that there are two other people crazy enough to buy the side of a hill, and that would be the two people who own lots one and two, and the partnership group that I currently have, who have talked to lots one and two. I want to stress that we have spent not only money buying lot three, we have came in and talked to Dean about the development process of lots one, two, and three. We're currently, as we speak today, having drawings drawn from an architect to build on the side of that hill of residential property. Our biggest concern has always been that we would get some flak from Victoria Heights residents, who've enjoyed that view forever, which, again, hence, they love their community, they're here today to speak for it. We knew we would get that opposition, and so we are trying to speak with them. Again, lot two, we have that negotiated price. Lot one, Leonard Knox, we had a negotiated price, and it seems to change, and we're working with that right now. So, I want to at least let you know that there is some residential interest in there, and that that will be coming forward in probably the next six months, subject to the approval of the landowners, I'm sure, up top, and approval of the planning commission and city staff helping us out, putting that together.
Well, I might ask a question, if you don't mind. Since you've already in some stages of development, will this additional use of the present hospice change your plans in any way?
Well...
Based on what you know, just that particular change, would that change your plans?
The traffic, the traffic flow may change us a little bit of the coming, the constant coming and going.
Uh-huh.
Again, I reflect back with Dana's comment of, if ten homes would have been built across there, people would leave to go to work. Some people would stay home during the day, and at five o'clock, they would come home again. And same thing with a nursing home visit, is people would come visit their loved ones and possibly stay all day, and then they would leave again, versus the, like he's saying, the constant coming and going of thirty to, or sixty cars every thirty to forty-five minutes of a visit. I will say, and again, I know every business is different, but I personally rented it, my commercial building, to a counseling, whatever you want to call it, service, and we parted ways. Based off the coming and going of the clients, the clients who visited didn't really care, they gathered and they had breaks. I'm not sure whether Veridian has counseling and group sessions, but I can tell you, counseling and group sessions at my facility meant ten to fifteen people with breaks of ten to fifteen minutes, and they stand out front and smoke and do all kinds of things. And I don't know that the plan that I have for residential use of looking down over across there, I want a group of ten to fifteen people. Again, I'm not speaking for Veridian. I don't know if they do group counseling. My other concern is, in the short time I've been on the planning commission, we've approved conditional use permits, and everybody stands in front of us and says, hey, we won't do this, and we won't do this, and we won't do this, only to come to find out, they do that. We won't put up signs, we won't stand in front of our business and smoke, and those things happen. And so, I can't imagine, I'm getting ready to invest five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars in the side of that hill, and I don't know that I want to go off conditional use permit once I invest seven hundred thousand dollars to stand six or seven groups of people out there, smoking and chatting, and cars coming and going. Did I know they were there? Sure, I purchased the lot after the hospice was already there. I'm not upset that hospice is there. I think hospice is a needed thing, and I hope that hospice, I wish it was successful, and it didn't make it, and at this point of what they wanted. I still believe there's a use for it in town. I believe that, I'm confused, there are two hospices in town. Half of my clients don't know which, what hospice is hospice. They just don't know. So, I believe my, I'm not, I'm against the traffic, I'm against the gathering of groups that possibly could take place, and I'm against that. I've seen it too many times, that if hospice doesn't work out, then they come back and say, you know what, look at our track record here, we'd like to be a hundred percent commercial, and now I've got over half a million dollars on the side of a hill, and I've got to deal with that.
Any other comments? Well, gentlemen, we have, we've heard a lot of pro and con here. Are there any comments? I'll bring this back to the commission for discussion. Any comments you gentlemen would like to make?
Well, you know, I will say that I've always been a believer of development infill in the city, when it can be done. And I, you know, I struggle with the concerns of the property owners. I probably would agree. If I were across the street or up on the hill, I would probably like no development down there. But I grew up on a farm where we had all kinds of open space, and when you move to a town, you give that up unless you choose to buy the property around you. You always run the risk of somebody building across the street from you in an open lot that may not be your choice as a property owner. So, that's one issue. The other is the street, and I assume, Dean, that that street was built to street standards of the city of Salina. Is that correct?
It's a standard public street. There's no issues about the capacity or the ability of the street to handle traffic or car, it handles trash trucks, it handles fire trucks.
It's standard width.
It's a standard width street. There were no, no corners cut on that. What we point out is that it's a very quiet street from the standpoint that the east side is vacant, except for Mr. Morse, and the west side has a relatively low intensity use of traffic. And there's no doubt that this will increase the traffic, but there's no question about this property, this street being designed to handle more traffic than it does.
Well, and that, my point is, that's another thing we give up in the city. We'd all love to live on a street that only had our cars on it, but if you live in town, sometimes it's simply not possible. And then, the last thing is the security and safety, and certainly I do not know the hospital's operation enough to, I mean, we asked the question, and it seems like there wasn't much security or safety issues that arose to the level of police involvement, so that's all I know. So, that would be my thoughts, and we need a motion to move this forward.
Those are good, those are good thoughts, and I agree with you. The only thing that's going to stick it in my mind is, though, it seems like there had been a great amount of care taken to show that this would be very low impact at the beginning of the project. And I understand that things change, but at the same point, what I struggle with is that I don't know that the adjacent property owners need to pay the price, because this didn't work, and then this is, yeah, this is the only alternate plan that can be realized. You know, I just don't, that increased traffic there, and so much care was taken for this to be specifically low impact to them when it was originally passed, is...
I would just have to say I agree with Max's comments.
I think Mr. Brooks has made some good comments. I think that the financial woes of the hospital are not my concern. They got into it with a, they take a risk, it's like all the risk the businessmen in this, in this community take a risk when you, when you do something like that. It didn't work for them, it possibly still can. I don't think it's the end of the world. I'm not saying they're shutting it down, but you shouldn't move that financial risk over to the landowners. I don't believe, they didn't take that financial risk, they didn't want it in the first place. It seems like they benefited from it, because they got a street. The lot, the landowners along that street benefited from it, but I'm not sure that they deserve the financial woes that come with it. And the serenity of the hospice was there, the reason why it was developed and put there, and decided by the previous planning commission to allow that to happen, was for the serenity of hospice. I can't believe that it's going to gain by having, having the Veridian group there. The people are going to want to put their loved ones there to, it's going to make more people want to go there and put their loved ones in that hospice, because that Veridian group is there. I think it could, it could, it could hurt the hospital more.
I guess I don't, I don't agree with the first part of that, and that is, I think that the hospice was a good fit infill there, and the fact the hospice, the hospital acquired later, they've done a good job fitting Veridian in there. I think that's a good fit. I don't accept the thesis that Veridian is something bad, and that their clients are necessarily dangerous. And the area was enhanced in value when the road was put in there. It hasn't increased in any value since, nothing's happened there since. So, I think the positive effects of hospice going in there were realized when it was, the facility was built, and now it's just static. And I guess, I for one, in my opinion, and no offense to the many people out there that I know and respect, I just don't agree that this is going to have that large of a negative impact. And I like the fit for the area, so. If there are other further comments, we'll take them, but maybe we should have a motion.
Well, this is obviously a very difficult decision and one that I wish, you always wish these could be worked out before they get here, and sometimes they can't. And so with that being said, I certainly, it's a difficult motion to make, but truly I believe that the development is, has some potential merit to the community, and the hospice building itself is a beautiful facility, and to enhance its use can only be helpful in the end to the community. So I would make a motion that we approve the application as presented. I think it's CUO three dash two B with the staff recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, before you pass the second, are there going to be any conditions?
I believe...
No. Well, one of the things that we did here was we wanted to see what issues developed and what issues developed in commissioners' minds to allow you, to allow us to help you develop what those conditions or stipulations would be. The two, the two thoughts that, that we had were, one, we thought some of the impacts would be mitigated if the primary patient entrance was on the north side of the building. And that wasn't clear to us visiting with Mr. Henen Camp, and it's not clear to us now whether that's proposed to be the case. But when we looked at it just from the standpoint of mitigating impacts on neighbors, having the primary come and go access for patients and employees on the north side or north face of the building would seem like that would reduce some of those things. The other, the other stipulations would be very similar to the, the initial conditions, which I will, I will read those off as to what the, the initial conditions were on, on the hospice facility, but it related to tying it back to the site plan, limits on the footprint and square footage. Obviously, if, what we would generally do is that we approve the last conditional use permit for a hospice facility, and that's one of the reasons we're here today, that this is not a hospice facility. So the conditions on the original approval were the hospice building shall be no more than 26,000 square feet in size. And as Mr. Henen Camp indicated, the initial proposal was actually for a slightly larger facility than what got built, but the current cap is 26,000 square feet. That could be reduced to the current square footage is right around 16,000 square feet. Hospice building should be limited to a single story and be residential in character and appearance, as shown on the elevation drawings presented to the Planning Commission. Exterior materials shall be comparable to those used in residential housing construction. Hospice building shall provide service to a maximum of 24 inpatients. A final site development plan must be reviewed and approved by the City Commission prior to issuance of a building permit, and any, the City Commission has reserved for itself the ability to review any changes to the parking arrangement here. And then, of course, that development and use of the site shall substantially correspond to the site development plan presented and approved. And so those, those were conditions that were placed on the original approval. So obviously, we could help you with those stipulations being no, no change to the building footprint, no change to the current design appearance and exterior materials, and no change in use beyond the two proposed uses without an amendment to the conditional use permit. This is a little different than most because we're not really concerned about looking at landscaping and lighting and things like that because those are already there. So the main thing would be you are comfortable, why? You're comfortable because the appearance of the building's not going to change, the exterior, the footprint is not going to change, and these are the limits to the uses and that it's going to remain to be used in accordance with the site plan that's been submitted here. If, if those are things that give you comfort, then the only things that we would have to add would be, we think having the patient and employee entrance for Veridian primarily be on the north side, and that the south entrance be a secondary entrance into the office area would help mitigate those things, but that's up for you to decide whether that's important or not.
Would you like to add that to the motion?
I would add the, apparently, we would stay under the existing conditions with the increased uses as identified, the two additional uses, and then a recommendation that in addition to that, the main entrance for Veridian be on the north side.
Those are the things that we identified.
I would amend my motion to include those.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is out of line, but could I approach you with some possible conditions to consider?
I think that we have to proceed with the motions made and with second. Then you can, you can, I'll let you give us your recommendations before the vote. Does that sound all right? Is there a second?
We don't have a second to that motion.
I can make the second, can't I?
No one else will. You may...
I am making the second for the motion. Okay. Is there further discussion on the motion? Mr. Morris, would you like to come back and?
No. I don't mean to question your parliamentary procedures, but it's late now because you'd have to amend the motion.
It is late.
Because it's been seconded.
And if you're going to say anything, you please speak into the microphone. Appreciate it.
I don't mean to question the parliamentary procedure, but it's a little late now. It's been seconded because now you'd have to amend the motion, if I'm right, Dean?
That's right, and I think we're headed for an up or down here.
Action on this motion, and the question is whether you're, if the maker of the motion wishes to incorporate your conditions in addition to what has been elaborated, then the maker of the motion can make an amendment to their motion, and if Mr. Ryan seconds it, then those conditions could be added.
If any additional conditions could make this issue more comfortable for the property owners and for the regional medical center, then I certainly would entertain listening to them. But if it's just more of concern about the project, and I think we're ready for an up and down motion. So if it, if it could make it more amenable to both, then I'd, I'd listen to them, and I mean, if that's all right with the chair.
It's fine with the chair.
Okay. I would ask that you restrict the number of Veridian staff that could be there to ten. I think their application said ten, and I don't want this, I think this is Dean's word, morphing into something that becomes bigger than what was ever considered. That the type of clients be limited to no court-ordered patients and preferably no violent patients. Dean, Dean has covered the access to the north. We'd like to see limited hours of operation from 6:00 AM, excuse me, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM with no nights and no weekends.
I would think those suggested changes would be impossible and out of the realm of the, of the duties of the city to enforce anything like that. That's just, like, they have to be there all the time. It would fall upon the neighbors, I suppose, to, to suggest that those weren't being met. That seems...
In our conditional use permit ordinance, hours of operation is actually a specific condition that the Planning Commission has the authority to address. For instance, if somebody had a convenience store operation and you didn't want it to be 24 hours, you have the authority...
But to screen the clients sounds out of the realm.
That would be a difficult one to enforce, other than a statement of intent that could be acted on if it was changed later.
And then how, if you restricted the hours, there are no hours for the actual patients there in the hospice, I believe. People could come and go there, so how are you going to tell the difference? Again, it's just a minor, a technical detail. I think we do.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Since I hadn't really heard these conditions, it's useful to be able to think about those and address those. I might still rely on Linda and David on, like, the number of counselors, the hours of operation, and those sorts of things. As far as the north entrance, I don't recall that being mentioned, but I don't know that we're absolutely opposed to it. We simply don't have a design that encompasses that. What we are intending to do is make use of the front hospice entrance and create a new entrance as it was shown, actually not create a new entrance, but to cover an existing entrance to make it appear compatible with an earlier design that was shown, which was done by Jones Gillum, that would, we feel enhanced the appearance of the building. I want to let Linda and David speak. Right, this would be it, and if somebody's got the green pointer, the one there would be the Veridian entrance, which right now is the hospice, and then the one that Dean just pointed to, to the left there would be the hospice entrance.
That was simply a comment or observation on staff's behalf that if you were to reorient, delete that there, but to create something on the north side, I think that would mitigate some of the impacts of comings and goings, but that, that's just staff's opinion.
The intent is to put as much of the parking to the backside of the building as we can. I want to emphasize, and I think staff have done it, and I appreciate the concerns of the, of the neighbors and who might be there, but when we met, first meeting at the city to discuss this, three, three city members volunteered that they too had used Veridian services. I mean, one, a daughter that was terribly frightened of dogs. I mean, she was terribly frightened, and in three or four sessions, that was overcome. Another that was having very great difficulty with...
I'm sorry, is this in direct relation to the, the conditions? Because if not, I don't know that it's appropriate to make further comment.
Okay. I appreciate that. I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Brooks, it is not, so I would let Linda and David come up and address the number of counselors and those sorts of things, hours of operation. Thank you.
What Mr. Morris suggested was to limit this to ten Veridian staff members at, at any time, no court-ordered patients, and hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM was his requested conditions, and no nights and weekends.
We're closed at night. We're closed on weekends, and we're closed on holidays. Mondays and Fridays, we work eight to five, but very few staff are even there on Fridays. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, we would like to operate eight in the morning to eight in the evening, so kids coming in after school and families, when people get off from work, that they can come in. As far as actual therapists?
Well, actual therapists, we have ten therapists. Seven of those are full-time, not meaning that they work every day of the week, but they are considered full-time. And we have two psychologists that do work full-time and a nurse practitioner. So our full staff, full-time load is ten people, but they're not always working at the same times. We like to have about 12 people on staff working full-time consideration.
I'm not inclined to change my motion at this time. I think we're, I'm right kind of where I was. I think we're starting to control things. We have a little bit of no control.
Well, we've kind of let everyone have our way with us, and it's partially my part, my fault. If there were conditions that were amenable to the, the residential folks, we should have heard those earlier, but maybe it was useful in the conversation to have some extra communication that'll help the commissioners make up their minds.
For Crystal's benefit and the commission's benefit, I'm going to restate the motion from Mr. Kennedy with the things that we have assisted with the benefit of everybody. The motion for Mr. Kennedy was to approve this conditional use permit application or amendment to the existing conditional use permit, and the permitted uses would be hospice facility and office and clinical space for Salina Regional Health Center's behavioral services, that there would be no footprint changes or no changes to the existing building footprint, that there would be no exterior changes or changes to the appearance of the exterior of the building, that the primary entrance to the behavioral therapy portion of the building would be on the north side of the building. And that there's a further stipulation that's on there, whether you have as a condition or not, but the City Commission reserve for itself the right to review any changes to the parking arrangement at this site, and so they would, if this were approved, they would, they would still reserve unto themselves to look not at the use, but just to look at the changes in parking. And that, that was done because they were concerned that they didn't want hospice operation to expand parking or move farther north or anything without their review. So the, that is the conditions as I understand it, and the motion does not include the limit on staff members or patients or hours of operation. Is that a fair statement of your...
Yeah, with just one, and not to belabor this, but one thing is the, the north entrance, I agree with that condition. I'm, I'm sorry that that was kind of new to you, apparently, at this meeting, but I still think that's, that's something we have the right to do as added condition to this, and I think the north entrance would help with some of the concerns as far as coming and going, and so I would add that. And so, yes, as Dean stated, I'm accepting that motion, apparently, as it should be written.
And I will second the motion. There's not further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Could we have a, maybe we should have a show of hands for the secretary?
Those in favor of the motion?
And those opposed, please? Thank you. The motion fails. Thank you all for your participation. We appreciate it.
I would like to share for those here and for Mr. Henen Camp, as well as our conditional use permit provisions allow for any party that is not satisfied with the decision rendered by the Planning Commission can, within 14 days, appeal your decision to the Salina City Commission if they so choose. But Salina Regional Health Center would have 14 days from today's hearing to submit a appeal in writing of your decision today.
Thank you, Dean. Are there other matters to come before the commission?
For other matters, we will meet on May the first. I know many of you could not, or were not able to attend, which made for a fairly busy day, but I don't know if Mr. Purney could give an estimate turnout, but we had about 20 people, interested parties, attend our steady session, and they want us to be more proactive on making Salina a more bicycle-friendly community, and they have shared those ideas with us. We had Deon Louthen, the Parks and Recreation Director, and others there taking note, Dan Stack, the city engineer. So we'll be following up and reporting back some of that to you on May first. We have Foxborough Mini Storage, which is a planned development district out on Foxborough Drive, maybe coming back for the fourth or fifth amendment of their planned development district out there. There'll be a public hearing on that on the first, and then we are moving forward with an application for, what we agreed to do was the initial mapping of the public use district will be a hearing on the rezoning of all the public school sites. So we will take the elementary, middle, and secondary school campuses, and then we'll also send a notice to Sacred Heart St. Mary's and say, here's what we've come up with. This has been initiated. Here, here are the pros and cons of, of being a public use zoning district and see if they want to join in. But we'll, we'll start, we'll start with the schools because that's actually easier than everything the city owns. We got water wells. We got all kinds of stuff that, we got inventory for water tower sites so that, the schools are more manageable to start with. So we'll start with that, working with somebody on... Working with somebody on a conversion of a duplex to a triplex, and there's a, a project that Kansas Wesleyan is working on that hasn't worked its way to us, but I do expect that things are picking up on the activity side. It's unrelated to the planning commission except for Mr. Ryan, who's your representative on the BZA, but they'll be taking up a case on Thursday that's a off-street parking numbers variance for the proposed Olive Garden restaurant out on South Ninth Street, but that will be on the BZA's agenda Thursday. But I don't, I don't see any vacations for you on your, your bi-weekly meetings coming up. We appreciate when you share with Crystal when you're on vacation because that helps us plan for quorums and such. So the only other item was that the city commission, city manager wanted us to look at some things in the off-street parking arena, particularly some clarification on surfacing, and we had discussions about the decision in 1990 to grandfather in existing parking, gravel parking lots, but one of the things we want to discuss with you is, is there a point in time when that, that grandfathering should expire or something different needs to happen? So with your permission, we'll initiate something on that and give you all the background on that. I was sharing with city commission that there's only been two planning commission meetings where police protection was needed, and one was the paved parking ordinance, and the other was when we were looking to restrict the ability to park RVs and tractor trailer rigs and things like that in residential neighborhoods. We had a lot of independent truckers that liked to take their cabs home with them and didn't want anybody telling them where to park.
Right.
So the, the issue at the time was that there was an underestimation of how many gravel parking lots there actually were in the city, including the city of Salina having some of their own.
Right.
And there, there just wasn't clarification of what the status was of the, so we'll bring all that background to you and get some guidance from you on that.
Thank you, Dean.
I'm sure you'll appreciate that.
Lengthy meeting, gentlemen, thank you for your patience.